This is the agenda of the regular board meeting. President, Board and Trustees, Villas Givernum, Co. County, Illinois. Today is November twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen. At this time, will the clerk call the roll, please?
Trustee Cap?
Here.
Trustee Bonner? Trustee Garcia?
Here.
Trustee Greer?
Here.
Trustee Richardson?
Here.
Trustee Claybrook?
Here.
Thank you for the performance, President, to be stamped with a plus at the meeting. It would be legal for trustee Greer.
... of the United States of America, and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, there is the approval of corrections of the minutes of the board meeting that was held on October twenty-second and November twelfth, two thousand nineteen. Corrections to be made to the...
I'll make a motion to approve the minute.
There's a motion before by trustee Cap to approve the minutes by October twenty-second and November twelfth, two thousand nineteen. Could we have a second, please?
A second.
A second by trustee Claybrook, the clerk take the roll.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes.
Motion passed, thank you. Before the, uh, before we open the meeting to the public benefit, if anyone has anything to say to the board, if you will give us your name and your reason for addressing the board, then we will love to hear from you. I will ask for motion to open the meeting to the public.
Make a motion to open the meeting to the public.
There's a motion on the floor by trustee Claybrook to open the meeting to the public. Could we have a second?
Second.
Yeah, second by trustee Garcia, will clerk take the roll.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes.
Motion passed, meeting is now open to the public. Are there any public comments? Are there any public comments? I will ask for motion to close the meeting to the public.
I make a motion to close the meeting to the public.
There's a motion on the floor by trustee Richardson to close the meeting to the public. Could we have a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Claybrook, the clerk take the roll.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia? Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes.
Motion passed, meeting is now closed to the public. I just want to do another little follow-up on the water main break that we had on November the seventh. Some of the people were not here at the last meeting. And again, it, uh, I mean, it impacted three quarters of the town. And it was, uh, you know, something that called us all off guard, but we have no way of knowing when something like that may happen. So we have to take all the, uh, I mean precautionary measures and procedures that we do. And, uh, I think that Diane had called about it. I mean, as well as a lot of other people. And so I came in at five o'clock so I could help to man the phone, or should I say man the phone, because the office doesn't open up till nine, so we certainly didn't want to keep the good people in front of me and suspend, I mean, for that long a period of time. So, um, the, uh, and again, I want to emphasize that a water main break, um, the board order is a precautionary procedure that mandated by the Illinois EPA. It does not necessarily mean that the water's going to get contaminated, or people going to have some issues, or get poor, and then get sick, or anything like that. But it is precautionary and it's mandated, so we have to follow it. And just for the sake of the argument, the pressure in that pipe, that was a twelve-inch pipe, and the pressure was fifty psi throughout the volume of the pipe. So, um, that was a lot of pressure. But once it breaks and the water is expressing out of the pipe, I mean, at a high pressure, it is almost impossible for the water to go back in reverse direction to cause any type of contamination. I mean, virtually impossible. But however, that is a procedure and we have to follow that. So it's supposed to be about forty-five or fifty psi. It went down to about five according to the test that was done. So if it goes less than twenty, if it goes less than twenty water pressure, then we have to enter board order. And that is mandated by the EPA, and that's what we did. So, and just for clarification and to make that known to the rest of them. Um, we have a, uh, a grant for one of the parts that we will, uh, we will make the announcement in the spring. Uh, just under water, so we can make some improvements there. And, uh, and, uh, I was committed, uh, and have made some reviews of the bag separation. Trustee Garcia might want to check on that. And, uh, that's all I have to say. And trustee Richardson will give some additional information about the water main break. Thank you. At this time, we begin with a report from the clerk.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
And Mayor, I want to thank you for manning the phones that day. That helped a great deal before we got in that night, that day.
Well, a lot of calls came, I didn't have no time to phone asleep.
I have two things. Um, if there's anyone that knows of, um, a family that's in need, we're doing Christmas baskets for this season for Christmas. So if you know of anyone, or, um, they'd like to call into the Villa Hall and place their name, um, and information, they can do so at the office. They can call the office, seven oh eight, eight six two, nine one five zero. Um, the baskets and, um, the toys would be given out on December twelfth, Thursday, at the community center. Time, um, is still to be determined. Also, um, Remont Town Manor Apartments in Tinley Park has Affordable Senior Living. They're distributing wait, a waiting list application on Thursday, December fifth, two thousand and nineteen. It's for the ages of sixty-two or older, well, or, um, persons with mobility, disabilities and disabilities. Income limits are thirty-one thousand, two hundred for one person, thirty-five thousand, six hundred and fifty for two people. They can call the number at seven oh eight, four two nine, four zero eight eight, between Monday through Friday, ten a.m. to four p.m. And that's for Affordable Senior Living.
We will post it on our website for further review.
And I also want to wish everybody a safe and happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Thank you for asking that before, and Diane, you will not be going today. Okay, uh... Public education, health, safety, and welfare. Trustee Greer?
Yes. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Discussion of, consideration of, and taking action to approve or not approve on the purchase of the following. Three sets of firefighting turnout gear, that's the coat and pants, twenty-five of fire helmets, twenty-five bib, bib style protective hoods, twenty-five pairs of firefighting gloves, and ten pair of rubber fire boots, for a total cost of seventeen thousand, five hundred, ninety-nine dollars and twelve cents. And that's from Dingus Fire Company.
Okay, well, before we proceed, trustee, I would like for the fire chief to give us a little bit more information.
Sure. Well, the, um, the equipment that's being replaced, first of all, the, uh, the sets of firefighting gear being, that are being replaced is approximately fifteen years old. It's long beyond its useful life. We have a, uh, a need, an immediate need for that gear to enable firefighters who are currently qualified to do structural firefighting to have approved gear. There'll be additional needs in the near future, but the minimum sets we need at this point in time are three sets. The, the price of the sets, uh, of the fire gear are twenty-two hundred, approximately twenty-two hundred dollars each, uh, for a, uh, coat, fire coat and pants, or bunker, the heavy, it's called bunker gear, the heavy coat and pants. Um, and, uh, it's, this is gear that we've checked out at the firehouse. This vendor, this is a vendor that we've been experienced with for several years, and the individual salespeople are people that we know very well and we trust them. They have served us well in the past. So that's the firefighting gear, the turnouts. As far as the helmets are concerned, the helmets that we have, pretty much all of them are fifteen years old. We purchased them in bulk pursuant to a State of Illinois grant, uh, a small equipment grant back then. And they, fire helmets have an approximate lifespan of ten years. We've been able to stretch it out another five years. Mo, many of the helmets, uh, uh, have, um, some func, that we have currently have functional issues that make it necessary to replace them. And because of fire helmet, all this stuff is, is, is very much, uh, safety equipment. And because fire helmets especially, obviously protect head, it's extremely important that every firefighter have the latest, uh, in firefighting helmet, uh, equipment. So that's, we're, we're pretty much purchasing a new helmet for each person on our roster at this point in time. Uh, the fire helmets go for two-hundred-and-sixty dollars each, and so, uh, the coats themselves are about sixty, excuse me, the, the, the gear that I mentioned, the three sets was about sixty-six hundred. The helmets are about sixty-five hundred. Um, the, uh, the bib style protective hoods, these are hoods that firefighters wear over their heads, um, when they go into structures to do structural firefighting. They're, uh, they're extremely important for protecting the face, um, the ears, the shoulders, um, and that's why we're getting bib style, because some of the, the, uh, the hoods that we've had aren't bib style. They don't go down far enough, we've noticed. And so they really don't provide the, the protection that's necessary, uh, this day and age with the hot, the extremely hot fires that everybody is experiencing. So we're asking that, uh, again, uh, one, uh, one protective hood be purchased per firefighter on the roster. They're, they're approximately forty dollars each, and that's about a thousand dollars for those. As far as the, the firefighting gloves, we go for firefighting gloves quite often. Um, we've, we've been trying out different gloves over the years, and we find, we found some gloves that we really liked, um, and, uh, we figured that we might as well have everybody go with a new set of gloves. Um, the, and the gloves go for eighty-six dollars a pair, and so that's about twenty-one hundred and fifty dollars for the gloves. Again, we wear gloves on pretty much every call that, that, that we go out, um, whether, any fire call that we go out. And so it's an essential piece of equipment for protecting firefighters' hands. And the, the rubber fire boots, uh, we're, we're getting ten pairs. We assess what our immediate needs is for our fire boots. Of course, the boots are separate from the pants, they're the big, heavy, uh, rubber boots that, uh, we got, and we, um, those are priced at a hundred and thirty-five dollars each. And those will be sized in accordance with the firefighter, the individual firefighter's needs. So everybody'll, the, the ten people that are going to be getting the new boots will have those, uh, fit, custom fit. Everything that we're asking for, like I said, is, is essential safety equipment. It's called PPE, uh, personal protective equipment. It's, you know, I, I, it's, 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 it's the barrier between the firefighter and the bad stuff that, that we're surrounded by every time we go into a fire, so...
George, not familiar with that, because he worked at the Steel Mill.
Oh, okay. Right, exactly. Same, yeah, it's same kind of thing. So, you know, we've been, uh, trying to, I've been looking around for grant opportunities, um, to, to fund this purchase, and the, the, the grant that we've used before, the State of Illinois Small Equipment Grant, hasn't been available for quite some time, and I don't expect it to be available now. Um, we've, we've been utilizing some of the, the federal grants for some bigger needs that we have. So I think that this, this is the appropriate time for the village to make this expenditure. Um, as, as far as a payment plan, I'm pretty sure that Dingus does do payment plans. They have done payment plans with us in the past. I have not asked them specifically, although before, in, in an email that, and, and that I did get from a salesman, he did say that they do have payment arrangements that they can enter into with the village. Um, and so I certainly, you know, I'll leave that up to...
Is any other board members having a question?
I do. What happens to your old equipment? Does it get reused by somebody, or?
Well, it kind of depends. Um, there are, there are some departments, like in Mexico or far south, that we can send the gear to. We haven't in, in the past, some of the stuff we, some of the, what we're replacing, I tell her, not just to throw away. Um, but, uh, you know, some, some departments do have places where they can send, uh, some of this, and, you know, we'll investigate.
I'd like to have an idea, right, third world country?
All right, thank you.
Sure. No, thank, thank you very much.
Proceed, trustee, please.
Thank you. I would like to motion to approve on the purchase of the following. Three sets of firefighting turnout gear, that's the coat and pants, twenty-five fire helmets, twenty-five bib style protective hoods, twenty-five pair of firefighting gloves, and ten pair of rubber fire boots, for a total cost of seventeen thousand, five hundred, ninety-nine dollars and twelve cents.
Trustee Greer has made a motion to approve this equipment by the fire department at a total of seventeen thousand, five hundred and ninety-nine dollars and twelve cents. Could we have a second, please?
Second.
Could we have a second, please, now?
Second.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes.
Motion passed, thank you.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Appreciate it.
Yes. And I would just like to add to that, we most definitely need to keep our firefighters safe.
And I compare, thank you.
As, as you know, starting January the first, there's the marijuana recreational law will be passed. The new law will allow an Illinois adult aged twenty-five or older to possess up to thirty grams of marijuana. Those, those using the marijuana for medical purchases will be allowed to grow marijuana in their home. Senses will start in March of two thousand and twenty. You may do your senses online, but if you do not do your senses online, someone will visit your home to, to have your senses taken. And as you know, the sense is very, very important. And I would just like to just take a few minutes to bring your attention to safety. There's so many incidents happening in our world today. Incidents while shopping at the mall, you got shootings, gang fights, incidents while driving your car, road rage, incidents while getting gas, people robbing you, or trying to hijack you. Even you have to be careful when you get out of your car to get gas, you, you need to pay attention, uh, lock your doors, because you leaving out the one side and someone is coming in on the other side. You have incidents with people ramming into your car, trying to hijack you. Incidents of children playing in the yard, parents not paying close attention. I just take them for granted that your child is in the yard and they're, they're going to be safe. You got incidents sending your children to the public bathrooms, and I just heard of an incident today where this, a school, they want a trip, so the teacher sent this little, who was three or four-year-old child, in the bathroom, um, and someone raped her. We just can't take things for granted. Incidents with, uh, private entrepreneurs, people meeting, people online, then they're selling items and they're meeting somewhere. Someone just got murdered for that. So incidents at our educational institutes, uh, elementary school and college also. So we cannot be, we have to just be very, very careful, don't take anything for granted, and don't think because it's happening elsewhere, it can't happen to us. It can. So we just have to learn how to pay more attention and to be safe. And I, I'd just like to thank everyone for attending our meeting today, and I want you to know that Burnham is constantly moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, President, for that reporting of information. Public Works and building, trustee Claybrook?
Uh, good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Discussion of, consideration of, and taking action to approve or not approve the Lord's bid for the replacement of the furnace on the Villa Hall side. S and S Services provided a quote of thirty-four hundred dollars for American Standard, hundred and twenty thousand BTU, and thirty-three hundred for Ameristar, hundred and twenty thousand BTU. Lord Enterprise HVAC for twenty-two, for two thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars for Bryant Carrier, one-ten, hundred and ten thousand BTU.
And let me add, uh, trustee, that, uh, because the question has come to me that one of them was, uh, was ten thousand less than the other one, so I called the vendor up, and he told me that, uh, that the capacity that we have here, that it, that only eighty percent is enough, because otherwise the extra heat goes up in the stack. So the most efficiency, eight percent would be enough for the side of the builder, because the other side of the builder is mandated by another furnace, you know, so...
So I make a motion to approve the Lord's bid for the replacement of the furnace on the Villa Hall side. S and S Services provided a quote of thirty-four hundred dollars for American Standard.
No, you should just announce a little bit.
Oh, okay. I make a motion to approve the Lord's bid for the replacement of the furnace on the Villa Hall side, which is Lord Enterprise's HVAC, worth two thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars for Bryant Carrier, a hundred and ten thousand BTU.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor by trustee Claybrook to approve the, uh, payment of a new furnace for the Villa Hall, two thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars. You need a second, please?
I second.
And a second by trustee Greer, the clerk take the roll.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passed, proceed.
Okay. Discussion of, consideration of, taking action to approve or not approve the hiring of Jesus Lopez as a temporary Public Works employee due to the current situation in the Public Works Department.
Okay, so before we proceed, uh, we would like to must, uh, to raise the stand. Give, if so, Lopez, Lopez, and, uh, and just, um, tell us, you know, why he feel he would be an asset to the Village Department.
I would like to get the opportunity to work for the village and give myself a, a better job for, in the future for me and my family, and get something stable, I can give myself good work for the community.
All right, and, uh, the position was found off at seventeen dollars and fifty cents an hour, for now. And, uh, you know what the situation is that you have here, but, uh, we always look for good people that I'm sure to be enduring and long-lasting.
So, of course, do you have, uh, commercial drivers license? Yes, I have a class A. Class A on CBL, and I also have a key driver's on record, and also a key background.
And all of them verified, yeah.
Can I, um, and are you a Golden Resident? Just curious.
Um, I actually live over on Elyseop, Pulaski.
He's saying he can give you in three minutes. All right, thank you. You know, the question? Okay. Proceed.
Thank you.
I make a motion to approve the hiring of Jesus Lopez as a temporary Public Works employee due to the current situation in the Public Works Department.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor by trustee Claybrook to approve the hiring of Mr. Jesus Lopez. You need a second, please? Second by trustee Garcia, will clerk take the roll?
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes.
Motion passed, you're blown to us now, congratulations.
Okay, uh, I only have one other thing. Public Works had the leaf collector out, uh, lately, and, uh, picking up leaves. I saw, uh, a man of Steve that had, that residents, uh, raped their leaves to the parkway, and I went by it today, and, uh, all the leaves were picked up. And just a reminder for the residents, uh, when you rake the leaves to the parkway, make sure they're, you know, they're close to the parkway and not, uh, like in the middle. I saw a few people making piles of leaves in the middle of the grass, and, um, you won't be able to get to them if you do that. And also move your cars away from the curb so the, uh, equipment can't get to the, uh, leaves and everything like that. And, uh, that's all I have.
As far as the leaves go, uh, the home would not be picking up any of the leaves this season. Today was the last day. They might pick them up next week, but they put the notice out that today would be the last day, so. I mean, as a courtesy, they might pick them up next week.
Have they made a separate stop for those, or did they get them with the gardeners?
No, they get them with, yeah.
And where do the notices go for the residents?
It was posted on the website.
We had on the website, we've been passing them out here in the general town. And now we got a month up here, and we'll be putting out more information, you know, for the residents.
Yeah, it's like, you know, we get like a flyer or something like that, and you can tell them out, like on our block or something like that.
It's also on the annual flyer, that where the stickers are put on the back, it's kind of, um...
So what days, what days do you pick them?
Well, they were out today. Uh, Dwayne, are there, uh, special days that you go out with the leaf collector?
Yeah, any day, you know, weather permit. If it's windy, snow on.
Oh, okay, okay, all right.
That's all I have.
Okay. Mr. Lopez, uh, that you will be reporting tomorrow, right?
Yes, sir.
Anyway, would you bring him to the office sometime, and I'll solicit the process of information? Okay, um, an ordinance revolution of the county's plan, trustee Garcia?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Discussion of, consideration of, and taking action to approve or not approve ordinance number twenty nineteen dash O dash zero zero seven, prohibition of recreational cannabis business establishments, and ordinance amending chapter sixty-two, offenses and miscellaneous provisions, article five, offenses against public health, peace, and safety of the Court of Ordinances, Villa of Burnham.
Okay, so let's go through this again. Again, this is the cannabis, uh, ordinance, and what this actually means is that, uh, the Villa of Burnham, I'm asking the board if they would, uh, if we would opt out of it for now, and we'll take a wait-and-see attitude and see what happens down, coming down the road, uh, as many other towns are doing. We have, uh, been doing the survey, I think we had a meeting about a month or so ago. We concluded that the survey was like fifty, fifty, but fifty percent are guessed it. But now it's probably fifty-one, forty-nine. Uh, so, um, so we, um, I'm going to ask the board to, uh, vote to opt out of it for now, and we'll take a wait-and-see attitude and see what happens. The board having a question? Proceed, trustee.
Discussion of, consideration of, and taking action to approve ordinance number twenty nineteen dash O dash zero zero seven, prohibition of recreational cannabis business establishments, in ordinance amending chapter sixty-two, offenses and miscellaneous provisions, article five, offenses against public health, peace, and safety of the Court, Code of Ordinances, Villa of Burnham.
All right, thank you.
Very briefly, uh, this is an ordinance that just prohibit, prohibits business establishments and dispensaries at this time. It does not prohibit personal possession and use of cannabis after July, after January first. If you're a minor, you're still, uh, illegal to possess, there's hope, you know, in the state of Illinois. However, after January first, after midnight, uh, you will be able to, as a person, enjoy and, and, and possess it and smoke it. There'll be no prohibition against that. It's akin to prohibiting a tip in your town, but not making your town drunk. We're going to revisit this in the future. A lot of communities are doing this. One of my associates in the Illinois Municipal League, uh, we had a conference in October, and there was a lot of discussion. Most towns that have medical marijuana dispensaries are definitely going into it. We don't have such a dispensary, and, uh, the only thing I can tell you is that, uh, there are certain strings attached to federal grants that this town has applied for, and at this time, uh, has been given the federal grant, uh, for the grade separation study at Burnham and Brainerd Avenue. Under federal grants, we have to certify that we're compliant with all federal laws. It is still a federal law against the law to possess marijuana. So we have a juggling act here. Do you want to bridge, or do we want to have what I would call another video store attempt? So it, it's a balancing act. I've advised the mayor that we should take it, as other communities are looking at things, that we have an extra added, uh, obligation here to see that at least our constituents in this town will no longer be annoyed by that intersection of Burnham and Brainerd. And naturally, Murphy's Law. The only person who expressed... The only person who expressed any interest in a dispensary is at the corner of Burnham and Brainerd.
Yes.
You know, this luck would have. So, uh, it's a simple proposition of no Brainerd in my mind. Do you want a bridge or an underpass? They call it a grade separation? Or do you want to be able to go buy marijuana right there?
And the last thing I'd like to say before we, uh, take the vote, before the board votes, um, if the village does not opt out of it by December thirty-first of this year, in our case, it would be December the twelfth, because that would be our last meeting. And if, uh, if Mr. Johnson wanted to go and put up a store somewhere, then we will not be able to stop it. We don't opt out of it. So that's all I have to say. So proceed, trustee. Will you make your mark? Will you need a second?
I'll second it.
You said by Trustee Cap, will Clark take the roll?
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer? Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you, motion passed. Proceed, trustee Garcia, thank you.
Discussion of consideration of and taking action to approve or not approve the Comcast Television Franchise Agreement, ordinance number twenty-nineteen dash O dash zero-zero-eight in ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of a cable television franchise agreement by and between the Villa Chelburnham and Comcast.
Okay, so are there any questions from the board?
Discussion of consideration of and taking action to approve the Comcast Television Franchise Agreement, ordinance number twenty-nineteen dash O dash zero-zero-eight in ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of a cable television franchise agreement by and between the Villa Chelburnham and Comcast.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor by Trustee Garcia to approve this agreement with Comcast. We need a second, please?
Second.
Second by Trustee Richardson, will Clark take the roll?
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes, all right, motion passed, thank you. Do you have anything else, trustee?
Discussion of consideration of and taking action to approve or not approve the listing agreement for the property located at one forty-five twelfth Torrance Avenue in Burnham with Coldwell Banker Agent Chuck Groby.
Okay, now this is the old furniture store that's on Torrance. Um, we had a, uh, entrepreneur that had entered into a, uh, contract with the Villa Chelburnham about six or eight months ago, or something like that, and they made a decent down payment, uh, down on the project, and for whatever reason, they changed their mind. And, uh, without a student attorney as he is, then I mean, he designed it in such a way that if they fell through on the agreement, that the money would not be refundable. And so if you would like to touch on that briefly, then we could provide it. Then we'll request and then we'll get this off tomorrow. We probably will list it, uh, for seven to five thousand. And we'll probably accept either sixty-five or sixty thousand for it to make sure we move it. And this is also a Class A qualification. And we would like to get it back on the tax code and get a business debt as an operation.
As the mayor said, that's, uh, several months ago, a businessman wanted to develop, uh, the, uh, he and his partners wanted to develop the old furniture store into a restaurant. And, uh, it was supposed to be a cash deal. And he put up a total of sixteen thousand, five hundred dollars. And, uh, we extended the payment time, closed the deal. But we made it contingent that, uh, if he didn't close the deal by a certain date, the money would be forfeited to the village, non-refundable. And, uh, that be forfeited. He signed off the agreement, he released the sixteen thousand, five hundred. I will be drafting a resolution that that money be transferred into the general fund rather than holding it in escrow. And, uh, then the village will be able to use that money to pay or invest in whatever, uh, the board of trustees feel is, uh, appropriate at the time. So, uh, we still have the property and we still have an additional sixteen thousand plus. And this is a marketing agreement, actually it's a listing agreement to listen with a broker, a commercial broker, so.
We'll have the damn seven percent in the proceeds. Okay, so proceed, trustee Garcia.
Discussion of consideration of and taking action to approve the listing agreement for the property located at one forty-five twelfth Torrance Avenue, Burnham, Illinois with Coldwell Banker Agent Chuck Groby.
I'll second it. Don't hesitate, you don't need to. You're gonna make a motion for that? Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor by Trustee Garcia. And a second by Trustee Cap to approve sale and the listing of the property at one forty-five twelfth Torrance Avenue. Will Clark take the roll?
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes.
Motion passed, thank you. Thank you, trustee Garcia. Glad to hear that. Um, the next thing we have is, uh, finance, trustee Cap?
I have nothing tonight.
Trustee Cap. Public, uh, Public Utilities, trustee Richardson?
Good evening. As the mayor mentioned earlier about the water main break, it's not something that we can always, uh, know that's gonna happen. It's just, when it happens, you have to jump in and do what you need to do to get it repaired. So, um, with that being said, the bill for the water main repairs was seventeen thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six dollars and eleven cents. And that was with Calumet City Plumbing, who's very familiar with all of our, um, pipes and everything concerning our sewers. And then we had to repair the cement on the road right there at Torrance and State. And that was six thousand, six hundred and forty-nine dollars and fifty cents. So it was a total of twenty-four thousand, four hundred and twenty-five dollars and sixty-one cents for that water main break.
And I, I'd like to add to that, we had to test, we had to be tested to make sure that the pressure was proper, which I mentioned earlier. And we have not gotten that bill in yet, so I would say overall, once everything comes in, the total cost will probably be close to thirty thousand dollars. So, and, and that's why it's important that we ask the people, you know, to, uh, support us and with the bills and things, and, you know, trying to keep those things up and, and also we can run the business down. And so once that's done, then we can take care of our business and take care of your business at the same time, which is all, uh, which is actually all the same.
Cedar is coming to the community center on December fourteenth. It's a Saturday. They'll be there from ten to two. You can call the village hall and schedule an appointment. And you can let your neighbors and friends who may be eligible, let them know about the date. And that's it for me. Better go to the village.
Our correct agent, trustee Bonzai, have a trusty grea, have something under that for me.
Yes. Bringing the holidays with, uh, Calumet Memorial Park Park District proudly presents Holiday Fun at Memorial Park. That is Saturday, November the thirtieth. Come out and help us transform Memorial Park into winter wonderland for the holidays. This is a free community project, and all are welcome to attend. The festivities will begin at eleven AM with the decorating of the park and its live trees. We also have face paint, free food, drinks, rides, tarot, movies, and more. Then at five o'clock, we will have our, our tree lighting ceremony, followed by fireworks. For more information and details about how you can participate in this, um, event, please call Andre Evans at seven oh eight, eight six eight, two five three oh. Again, if you have any questions, call Andrea at seven oh eight, eight six eight, two five three oh, extension one twenty-eight. This event is held every year and it's a wonderful, wonderful event. So come out, bring us home. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Greer, uh, whenever reporting that information. At this time, uh, I want to ask trustee Greer to stand. I would ask Clark to there to stand. And at this time, I would ask Chief Horvath if he would come up and vote. Well, the Villa Chelburnham certainly do appreciate everything that you've done for us here. We didn't tell him his wife was coming, so, you know, I am kind of sneaking, so. Well, we would like to present this plaque to you on behalf of the Villa Chelburnham, the trustees, the board, and, and the mayor and myself. And we certainly, and appreciate everything that you've done in the department through the years. And it all reflected here in the twenty-eight years that you've been here. And we certainly do appreciate you for that very much.
Thank you very much.
And also, since you're gonna be retired, you know, you'll have some extra time on your hands, so. It might be for work, or it might be for play. So we would also like to present this, uh, tablet to you on the behalf of the Villa Chelburnham.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. I thank everybody for, uh, everything, of course, and, um, we could not have done what we've done in the department without the support of your, your honor, the mayor and members of the board of trustees, of course, the citizens as well. I did note that, um, thirteen years ago on the second meeting of November's, when I was appointed the chief. So trustee Lou said that, it, it said that this was my birthday last Sunday. I think maybe she meant it was my anniversary of being on the department, but, uh, you know, thank you very much. A, a special place in my heart, as always, for the folks of Burnham. Uh, I know where everybody lives, so. I won't be a stranger. Be safe, be well, happy Thanksgiving.
And after, uh, and after the meeting is over, then we have some of the freshmen here and we'd like to entertain and, uh, and celebrate this retirement.
Okay, um, and under the, um, now advanced communications and memorial dress mask issue, well, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence to, uh, August Weaver and Corey Moore, you know, who was killed in an accident about a week ago down on Torrance, a twenty-year-old young man. Who lives here on Marquette. And, uh, and August, um, they had a funeral service today. So we can have a moment of silence, please, man. All right, thank you. And unfinished business, I would like to make a correction. I said the next meeting would be December the twelfth. It will in fact be December the tenth, December the twelfth, two thousand nineteen. Is there anything on the new business? I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. I make a motion to adjourn. A motion on the floor by trustee Claybrook. Do we have a second? Second by trustee, trustee Richardson.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes.
All right, motion passed, meeting adjourned, and, uh, take a round for the party.